Okay, everybody, we'll get started. We'll call this meeting to order for the Latre Village Planning Commission on Tuesday, November 16th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So move on to roll call.
Roll call, Chair Potowski.
Here from my home in Latre Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Present attending from Latre Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Secretary Stansberry.
Here from Latre Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Commissioner Dillard Russo.
Here from my home in Latre Village, Oakland County.
Commissioner Cantor.
Here, Latre Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Commissioner Fobbs. Commissioner Hicks. It's a. You have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then at this point. For approval of the agenda. For this evening's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard Russo.
Yay.
Commissioner Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the meeting of October 19th, 2021. If there are no noted issues to attend to on it, we will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written or entertain any corrections or questions related to it at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2021.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Secretary Stansberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2021.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public comment section. Public comment, yes.
I just want to let you know, Commissioner Hicks has just joined us. If we could get him to tell us where he is attending the meeting from, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm currently in Westland. Sorry, couldn't be more settled in my home office, but I'm currently in Westland. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We'll continue on. I was about to say the public comment section is usually reserved for comment on items that are not on the agenda. And so we'll open that at this time.
Mr. Roberts. Yes, Mr. Roberts, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
You can speak, Mr. Roberts.
Okay. I'm a 43-year-late resident living at 27486 Latre Boulevard. Suzie Stack arranged for you to have a copy of the outline I'm going to use. And I wish to present a chronology of cannabis investigations for the city that brings me here today. City Council enacted an 18-month moratorium on cannabis decision to allow time to evaluate. That expired in September of 2020. The marijuana study group was then formed, which cited cautions on traffic volume and parking issues and emphasized a need for rigorous vetting. The marijuana study group recommendations were then made to City Council in July of 2020. And the City Council and Planning Commission then took actions to regulate primary caregivers in February. And a cannabis open house was held in May of this year to raise public awareness and introduce a marijuana ordinance buffer map. As a result of the publication of this map, which cited commercial properties which met the requirements, cannabis businesses began looking into viable properties. As a result, I received four unsolicited bids by cannabis businesses to buy my second property in Latre at 28950 Latre Boulevard. Three were bidding on my lot alone, and one was bidding on my property and the property to my adjacent each east, which is an existing 3700 square foot, single-story, modern office building. It can easily accommodate 70 vehicles when combined with my property. And it's inobtrusively located 220 feet east of Latre Boulevard. The Planning Commission then passed an ordinance which limited cannabis facilities to vehicular, commercial, and mixed-use districts excluding the office district. And the City Council approved rules for evaluating candidates by November 1st, 2021. My reasons for coming to you tonight due to legitimate concerns regarding traffic flow and parking, which were originally brought up by the marijuana study group and the limited number of viable places existing in our small city and having a commercial building location that was included as a viable location in the original and current marijuana ordinance buffer map. As a Latre resident of 43 years who has a stake in a property available in the business district, I'm requesting that you make this correct and immediately reinclude the office district in the viable cannabis locations. It's an ideal location for such a facility in the northeast corner of the city with an inobtrusive, modern office building that alleviates any concerns about parking and disturbing traffic patterns. The aerial map, which I've included along with a drive-by view from 12-mile road helps to verify the idealness of this location. I might add that the candidate who has rights to the two properties in question may very well be the highest qualified candidate if they're allowed to submit. I thank you for your service, your time, your attention to this matter, and perhaps this issue can find a champion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts.
No other hands raised.
Okay, well, I think it's important to state that this item, while brought forward to us for consideration, is not, not on the not listed for a decision or an action as an action item for this evening. So we will take that information and under consideration, and I'm sure have further discussions on that. So there are no other public comments at this time. I will move on to the next item of our agenda for this evening. Which is new business discussion of solar energy.
All right, Suzie, do you want to introduce her? Do you want me to just jump right in?
Thank you to jump right in, please.
I'm gonna jump right in, everyone. Um, so along with some of the conversations that we were having previously about electric vehicle charging, there was also some interest in having a conversation about solar energy. And I know that that this came up a little bit during your meeting last month, and there were some concerns about appearance. And so I just put together a very little, a brief kind of overview discussion about where or how, or how not, solar panels and solar energy equipment might be permitted currently, which is to say not very well. And then also some guidelines that I found from the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, and I think it's really helpful. One of the things that I noticed when I was out east this summer in Cape Cod were all of the cool little Cape Cod houses with the gray shingles and so many solar panels. It was surprising because I could see them and also surprising that they did not really. I noticed them because I, we were talking about it in another community. I'm like, oh, they do it here. They really don't look bad. They're flatter. Newer panels tend to have a lot less glare on them as well. I have a little, you know, like we did before, I've got a little slideshow. If you'd like me to go through that real quick, or we can talk, you know, higher level. It's up to you, Mr. Chair. I don't know what you'd like, how much conversation you want to have about that.
Um, I'm open to the slideshow if unless anyone on the commission has something they want to speak about first about, about solar panel or solar energy. Okay, not seeing any, so I think you can go ahead, Jill.
All right, let me share my screen then. Okay, so I think that you probably see everything I'm seeing, right? Or wait. Do you see my first slide or do you see my slides with my notes?
No, we see.
First slide.
First slider.
Technology works, yay. Okay, so this slideshow just goes through the short version of the small solar energy systems, different classifications, some potential impacts, and then areas of consideration. So similar to the way that we frame a lot of our conversations, we kind of get a little bit of a, an overview of the issue and then think about ways in which, you know, they might be, have negative impacts or what kind of negative impacts, and then think about how we can address those if we want to pursue it. So solar energy, and this is, I think, really helpful for the community as they begin to understand, you know, for different kinds of energy systems to be thinking, and I know I've been hearing a lot more about solar energy recently, and you probably all have been too. There really are three different types. So there's photovoltaic or PV, which is, tends to be more of what we would see in the Midwest and in our area. And then there's another kind called concentrated solar power, which I've got a couple of slides on it. I don't see this ever being anything where we would, that we would need, but I think it's interesting, so I put it in the slideshow. And then the third is sort of a combination of those two. So again, the photovoltaic is the most popular solar power method. The solar cells in those panels are converting the light into energy through absorption. It goes into the semiconductor material that's in those, those panels, and the action of that transfer causes the electrons to flow freely through the panel, and it produces the electric current. Again, this is a method of choice in Michigan. It's also the same method that circulation of electrons for solar thermal. Only there, we're talking about the heating of water or air, whereas the photovoltaic or PV is usually just used to describe producing electricity-producing energy. So some examples of that, so you'd see some rooftop panels that might be something that you've seen around. You may not have noticed accessory structures like this. This is just a little freestanding panel up next to someone's home. And then some of the larger panels that you may see, if you've heard the term solar farm, that's similar to what that would be. This is from LaPierre. It's from a couple of years ago. It's a DTE energy project. They have said that through these, these panels on this type of farm, that they can provide enough energy to power more than 9,000 homes, which is pretty significant. The concentrated solar power uses lenses and mirrors to focus that sunlight into a small beam that generates the power. It's less popular here, and you'll see why in a second. Because it tends to be more area-intensive and a lot more expensive. And this is an example of what that looks like. That is at a place called Crescent Dunes in, near Nevada, or in Nevada, near Tenopa. And it's spectacular to see it, but you can see the scale of that and why that's really not something that's going to be very prevalent around here. So some of the other components that we would see with a solar energy system include the inverter, which is going to convert the DC current into the solar energy or into the AC current. And then inverters also are used to monitor energy data and other components of the system. We may also start to see more of these services and systems, including the batteries to for storage as well. So there, we are seeing two kinds really also. So in those examples that I showed you, the PV panels, the, the two that were like residential in nature, those are really your onsite systems versus the utility energy systems for more like the solar farms. So onsite generation really is just feeding the electrical needs of a home or business onsite, and utility energy is energy that's produced at such scale that it can go back and feed the energy grid to serve other sites. When onsite systems produce more than what they need, it can feed into the utility system, but that's secondary to its primary uses providing onsite energy. And it just, just then its nature of sending some of it back doesn't make it considered to be a utility energy system. And then we see typically three different classifications, small, medium, and large, not super creative, but that's what they are. The small energy systems are either rooftop or in-ground PV systems, usually really good for smaller lots and denser areas, typically for residential or could be for business uses also. Small energy systems are onsite energy systems. So again, another example of panels here. Medium energy systems can either be rooftop panels, which is, I believe, like this one is intended for medium-sized lots. Primarily, you're going to see these more on business users or in larger open spaces. These can be used either for onsite, if you have a large enough site that needs a lot of energy, has a higher demand, or could be for utility energy systems. And then the larger systems are either rooftop or in-ground PV systems. Those again are on large lots, primarily business industrial open spaces. These are typically your utility energy systems. Some of the impacts, some of the concerns that we hear when we start talking with communities about solar energy systems, people do mention, they want to make sure that they're safe. Some people do have concerns about their aesthetics. People question whether they make noise. They don't really make a lot of noise. Glare is an issue. And as I said, that's one of the features that's been an improvement over the last several years to the panels themselves, is they don't give off that kind of glare that they used to. They're not as shiny as they used to. People consider their impact on the environment. You know, traffic is really not going to be an issue with these, and then property value. Because people always have concerns about that. So in terms of their safety impact, solar panels and their components are safe. The panels are made of glass and aluminum that encase the silicone and quartz materials. They're all, they're all sealed in tightly, and they're sealed enough to be protected from the elements. And so conversely, leaching into the environment is unlikely with those. The inverters do emit electromagnetic energy and some fields. They're similar to other electronic devices and other utility generators. They're all aligned with National Fire Code standards and don't risk, increase any risk to fire on a site. So we get to aesthetic impact, you know, I think that's a question where we make a lot of deference to the local community and what their tolerance is for the placement of solar panels. Because they are becoming smaller, more efficient, and I think more aesthetically appealing, we are starting to see more of them, and we have a lot of people that are interested in having those. The rooftop, the panels are pretty straightforward. In most cases, you can't really see them from the street unless they're placed on the front of the home. But I think an interesting application are maybe not as much the picture on the bottom, but the picture above it. Sort of the idea of a porch or patio with a covering. And now if we make that covering, if we allow that to be solar panels, well, that's just increases opportunities for that homeowner to be able to utilize some solar energy and incorporate that into their utility system. So I think that's another really interesting idea. Potential noise impact, they are very quiet. They can produce the hum from the converter equipment, but probably no different than an air conditioner that we would see. The sounds from the smaller systems are likely to be unnoticedable, so the larger ones that you might get some of that sound. Glare again, now designed to be textured matter or have other anti-reflective elements. And so that's a very good advancement, I think, in that technology. In terms of wildlife, these are really primarily aimed at those larger panels or utility systems. But they really are pretty safe to have around wildlife. Although I think it's, you know, most of the ones that you would see are probably going to be screened in to prevent some of that. There really isn't much traffic, especially again with the larger ones. We may not have to worry as much about this kind of a, a system here in Latre, but I think it's interesting to see it and be aware of it when you see it out and about in other communities as well. This, I thought, was pretty interesting. In 2019, Zillow, the real estate information company, found that solar panels can potentially increase a home's value by up to just a little over 4%. 4% more than comparable homes without solar panels. I think one of the reasons for that is that, once you make an investment into the solar panel system, it takes some time to, to receive the payback for that, and not a lot of time. Depends on how much you are investing into it, what kind of a system that you're purchasing, but there are credits available for that. But if it takes some time for that investment to, to be achieved, and someone else buys into that house, now they don't have any of that expense, and so down to them, you can see how that would be a nice way to increase your home's value. And so it's helpful to have, to be thinking about this. This, I think, is another really cool example of like a little patio covering that's made out of the solar panels as well. So people are getting creative with ways that they can add these in on their properties. And so some of the things that we might think about if we were going to regulate solar systems, we would think about what kinds we think we would have in the city, we would think about the heights, so whether they're freestanding, like accessory structures, or whether they're rooftop panels, if we need certain setbacks for those. What are our considerations for where they can be placed? Do we need to worry about if they're on the front of a home? What if the front of the home is where the best sun is? Thinking of trade-offs between trees and tree placement and solar panels might be something else that we would want to talk about. Thinking about lot coverage and drainage, although again, I don't necessarily think that that's something that we'll have to deal with, because I don't know that we would have that scale where that would be an issue, although I do think that lot coverage would be something to keep in mind, especially if we talk about the ground-mounted accessory structures. Landscaping abandonment, so if somebody had a ground-mounted system and they stopped using it, or rooftop panels and they stopped using those, it would be good to have that language in our ordinance to have that taken down, similar to the way we do with wireless communication. And then what the approval process is, it really should be a pretty straightforward approval process, don't make it too difficult. So again, some things might be more appropriate in some districts than others as well. This is a, these are like rooftop panels over a parking area. So the small energy systems we might see being permitted in all districts, so residential homes and then commercial businesses as well for onsite use only. Again, rooftop systems or the ground-mounted systems, we might have, these are just approximations a certain size that we wouldn't want them to exceed in the residential districts. Maybe allow some medium-sized, maybe on the roofs of some of our buildings or and we don't have a lot of extra area, but we do have area that we could see, you know, parking spaces were covered with like a carport-type structure that was then topped with solar panels. That could be something that we would want to consider. We might need to have some special additional language or consideration for that. I don't see any of the large solar systems really being appropriate here. So I don't know that we need to get too much into that. Just thinking about some of these ground-mounted structures, they can go up to 20 feet in height, but they can be as low as five. I think that probably something consistent with your current standards for accessory structures would be, would be reasonable, which is 10 feet right now. And they're limited to side or rear yard only. I think, oops, bad one. Certainly your regular permitting process, but anything larger and potentially, well, anything larger probably would go to the planning commission anyway, accessory structures if we were considering non-residential facilities like that. Again, another nice example of a patio structure. I think setbacks would probably also be similar to those for accessory structures. And then just some other things like rooftop systems, we probably wouldn't want to have those project beyond the edge of the roof or below the eve in any way. Ground systems, we can do that by district or type, and again, like accessory structures. So that's a picture of an older panel with some glare coming off of that. You can certainly address that in the standards to make sure that they don't shine into people's homes or into the view of cars passing by. Again, drainage or lot coverage, this is a nice example of some panels that have some landscaping planted around it to try to mitigate some of the runoff that would happen from the panels themselves. Lot coverage, same thing. Green belts, I don't know that we really would need to get into too much of that, and I think we need to be careful because our lots really aren't so big that we could have the structures as accessory structures and then have additional landscaping around it, because that might be, it might obviously be too much on one site, and it may be, may reduce the effectiveness of the solar panels if there's too much landscaping around it. So just a couple of other little, little tidbits, thinking about what we might do with landscaping. I don't want to get into too much of that at this point until we have a conversation. Again, the abandonment issue and decommissioning. And that was really it.
Thank you, Jill. Well, we can open that up for discussion if anyone has thoughts they'd like to share or ideas surrounding the idea of incorporating or at least accommodating solar energy or solar panels.
For the chair, if I may. Jill, I just had a question. Is, from your experience, have you seen anything involving like solar generators involved in any ordinances, or is it strictly solar panels? Just curious in terms of, you know, folks are moving towards solar generators now with all these power outages, and they seem to be more cost-effective than gas generators. So I was just curious if that was involved in any way.
I haven't heard people asking about them yet, but you're right. Especially with power outages, I think that's part of our, this all ties in with our larger conversation that we started with the comprehensive plan about sustainability and resiliency and being prepared. I don't know that there's, and I don't know enough about the solar generators to know if they require more space, if they would be any different than the generators that we already do allow. If there's anything that we need to consider for that, but it's a good point we should look into.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Actually, that, that kind of raises a question in my mind, because I'm not familiar with solar generator technology, at least if it's more than solar panels and batteries, what that technology even looks like and how it compares to some of the systems that Jill was sharing this evening.
I think you pretty much hit it on the head, Mark. It is, it's batteries and, and solar panels. It's just a, the bigger the battery, the bigger the generator.
And if I may, you know, to Scott's point, Mark, we've, I've seen personally some of the portable solar generators that you can kind of move around your house, but then I do know of some other communities where they actually have, as Scott said, these sort of larger solar generators with batteries and and they can be very expensive, you know, in terms of putting them on folks' houses. So I was just curious, you know, if any other ordinances had addressed that particular point, so.
And I can speak to something that's, I know is something that I, solar energy aside, but when, when it comes to technology and utilities, and I watch all the panels crawl up the side of.
And I watch all the panels crawl up the side of my house, or I should say the back of my house. Becomes that aesthetic issue of how we're addressing all these new technologies. And and this probably gets beyond what we would necessarily be able to regulate. Technically, it gets into complications, but but. In general, I think. In terms of the utilities and things that come into houses, we have to start paying more attention to, maybe as a society as a whole. What these things look like and is there a better way to capture these and not have them. On display as much as they are, and I know it's it's our backyards mostly. I mean, I think most of us have gas meters in the front in in Lathrop here. But with every phone service or in the past it was cable, you get new new things mounted and. It's, yeah, while it's not on the public or the street side, I think it's something that 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 I feel like needs to be reined in somehow. So anyway, that's a comment, not.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Sure.
So I didn't see in the presentation or even in the the packet, any discussion of batteries, right? So we just talked about batteries relative to generators, but. Solar power systems for our homes or businesses can also, you know, generate power that's stored in batteries. The ordinances should address, you know. Some sort of oversight of how those batteries are installed, whether they can be installed outside or if they have to be installed indoors. And I also had a question about whether the ordinances cover. You know, the, how you, how you approve the ability to feed. Excess power back into the grid so that it's essentially resold to a utility that can then reuse it. Is that something, I know that that's part of systems that people I know who have. Solar power at their homes, right? They have through the contractors that installed their power. You know, worked with the utility company in their area to. Make sure the system is installed in such a way that it allows for excess power to be distributed into the grid. But I don't know if that's actually covered in the ordinances or if that's just kind of something that is negotiated with the utility companies.
I think that's more of a building code issue and electrical code issue than a zoning code issue. The battery certainly. Would be part of the rest of the equipment. And referenced in the ordinance that way, so it'd be similar to other mechanical equipment. Meters and things like that.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
So, yeah, I I think that you're somewhat feeding off of that. The question of what happens to this equipment, where does it go? Once it gets insider, there's a requirement for it to be housed. The the implications could be, you know, what what can somebody assemble in their yard similar to like a shed or an outside facility for a purpose? And maybe that needs to be addressed or looked at as a consideration. I don't know if there's any specific criteria that would. How that would make this necessarily different than a than a shed when we start. Talking about power or other items brought, you know, utilities brought to it. But. We're talking about relatively small lots and 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 also dealing with issues. One of the things I think about is. I'm concerned about aesthetics and in the in the. How they're placed, how panels might be placed, whether on a structure or in a yard. And then it gets into the other issues as well, such as if the, you know, yards are small. And proximity to property lines. Issues of. I don't know how you address it, but your your neighbors entitled, entitled, neighbors are entitled to plant trees or shrubs and things which may grow and interfere with. Solar paths and that can get quite messy, I'm sure. So my general impression is. That if you have a larger lot or larger open space where you have control over that airspace and that all the solar path. That it's that it's easier and it's probably more likely to encourage the development. Whereas if you're a little bit more confined or you don't have that. You're you're not going to get as much out of it for what you're spending, you know, the money that you're putting into installing such a system. Not to say that that there's, we shouldn't look to ways certainly to encourage it in general. But I think it's, it it seems like a complicated thing.
One thing that just crossed my mind is, you know, if you do treat. If if somebody were going to store, for example, batteries outside of their home. And they're just going to be housed in something that's like an accessory structure, then the existing ordinance is around accessory structures and how big they can be. You know, the actual footage that we've talked before about, some homes have multiple storage facilities or accessory buildings. And then the ordinance takes into account the entire square footage of the multiple accessory buildings. So now you're talking about like maybe building a. You know, an additional accessory building to house the batteries that would be part of your solar system. And then does that reduce, that would reduce the amount of square footage that you have to have an accessory building for. Storage of things or something like that. So then would residents, you know, want the ordinances to be adjusted to allow for. A larger footprint of accessory buildings so that they could have both storage. Of their batteries for solar system and their, you know, storage for yard equipment and things like that.
And I would think that would be a matter of deciding if that's advantageous. Do do we, would we want to. Encourage or allow. You know, an increase of, you know, storage capacity or possibly size for a building if if it came to to that point. If we were speaking about, you know, new development, and I know that's not not exactly our situation. At least in terms of large scale neighborhood development, I would think that homes would be in the. Placement of them and the arrangement, if it was geared toward maximizing solar. That though some of those elements would be incorporated right into the home designs and. And accomplish it. So so we are talking about in our community accommodating it from a, you know. Adding on to something that was built in a different time with different technology and accommodating that new technology. In a manner that's not going to, let's say, in in the worst case scenario. Everyone's filling their yards with solar panels and it just. Playing havoc with the. With the, I guess, the natural environment that I think we also value, so.
Well, those are all good questions and. I can put together, you know, a little bit of language and get get some more information regarding. The sizes of the additional equipment. So we have a little bit better handle on. How much space that would take up. I I don't, I don't think it's more than what we would see on. You know, a regular generator. Probably not as big or. Maybe as big as an air conditioner. So I don't, I don't think it's going to require a lot of extra space to put those additional facilities together. But we'll do some research on that to bring back for our next conversation on it.
So Jill, have there been the examples from other communities that you've been involved with where. Solar and issues around silver have have crept up or is it?
Yeah, you know, we've had it in some of our our larger, some of the more rural communities too, where they were interested in allowing some of those larger scale utility. Type solar panels, but I actually have just recently. A couple of communities asking about solar panels and planning for that. In some, in places that, you know, I didn't think that they necessarily would, like the village of Bingham Farms or right nearby. I was really surprised that they were, that they asked to to have some language on that and their concerns are similar in nature. Not, you know, we did talk about the size, they were more concerned about the size of the structures if they had like. Envisioning somebody putting a deck out in the back or putting out these other structures or in some of their commercial areas, someone using a carport type. But definitely the idea of where the panels would go. And trying not to have them be on the front facing, street facing side of a of a home for the same reasons for aesthetics. And community character, but. And trees are an issue there too. They don't want to see the trees taken down to facilitate solar panels everywhere, so. You know, some of those trade offs. It was, it was very interesting there as we, as we started talking about it. Beginning, one of the planning commissioners said that he'd actually had them on his home for quite some time and no one had known about it, so. I made for some interesting discussions about, you know, how else we would, we might regulate them, so.
I found the the attachments in the packet from the historic perspective. And and it seems like they they absolutely tried to narrow it pretty tightly. You know, to to the backside and it puts the emphasis on the historic appearance more on the street side, which which. Which is interesting, it's kind of the public side of of things and. Just even related to building materials on the building materials committee. We've had the discussions of, well, why is the backyard which is visible to the neighbors? And they see it every day, is that less important? And and that aside, it it it, trying to find a way to incorporate. The technology and not have it disrupt historic fabric, whether it's physical removal or if it's just the aesthetic appearance. Is one of those challenges, I think. Historic districts and locations and will be having to come to terms with. Through the years, you know, unless something. For generating energy on an individual basis becomes less apparent or maybe just the aesthetic grows on people. That could be part of it as well, so.
What what's the current process in in terms of if if somebody wants to put panels on their roof? Do they just basically get a some type of building permit, electrical permit and just do it or? And and there's, there's no regulation on it? I mean, what's, what's the current process standard?
I think lack of a, for a lack of an ordinance, it would just be simply getting a permit and having the appropriate inspections done. Right. Under the building and electrical code.
Yeah, and we allow some. Extra height on, you know, height exceptions for things, so they could potentially be permitted on rooftops, but I think it's better to have specific language. In the ordinance to direct that so that they go where you want them to go.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, when I was canvassing, I saw some out there.
Yeah. I think that's just a building, building permit.
Yeah, I.
I believe they've also been around for a while. I haven't. I don't recall our building inspector mentioning new installation of solar panels at all. Since I've, since I've been with the city, so I don't know exactly how long those have been in place.
So I think it will be important to 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 continue down this path and to to look at ways to. Regulate or that can help define, you know, what are, what the planning commission and what the city's expectations are for. I guess deciding what's important to us from a standpoint of aesthetics. And and even if the planning commission views things one way, the historic district commission will likely have input as well. And I would expect that they would be following guidelines similar to what was attached. With the packet this evening. So those are all things that, how do you, how do you address these issues and not. Step on toes or constantly be going back to it saying, oh, we didn't cover this, so it's something to get our, our heads around. How, what we, what, how we regulate it or how we outline how it should be done. What physical impact, you know, what those results will actually be, so. So if if there's no other further discussion on this, it's not something we're, we're, we have anything to act on. Encourage, I think, the continued discussion and and possibly a look at what. An ordinance might look like and and what some of that criteria is so that we can start reacting to. You know, maybe what other communities have done. And also seeing what, you know, how they helped kind of craft the language that they did. So I encourage everyone in the commission to, I guess. Just be mindful of that and to look, maybe do some old personal homework. I'm sure Jill will be continuing to, along with Giffel's web server. Looking into this for us, but we can educate ourselves as well, so. So we'll move on. To the next item on the agenda, old business tabled items, and we have the EV charging station. Ordinance.
Oh, this is, I I literally just included all of the same information about the EV charging stations that we. Had from last month and I take full ownership, I failed on connecting with parents to coordinate. The, his colleagues to get, to come and make a presentation to us tonight. But they are still interested in talking to us about and and helping to educate the planning commission on. EV technology and charging stations and whatnot. It's sound, I I got from our last meeting that you were still interested though in. Moving forward with some sort of draft ordinance, so we, and. My notes didn't really show any additional changes from what had been presented. Last month, so that's what you have again before you and I guess. If there's changes that you want to make. Please let us know or if you want to move forward with. Adding to, moving forward with these text minutes, let's do that too, so.
Hey, can I chime in? We were a little tardy in responding to the EV charger, EV charging station company. So is it possible to put a place in the agenda for the next meeting? And we alert them as soon as that happens or we have approval to do so. I think we basically responded on Friday for Tuesday and so that was. A little bit tight for them to respond, so I'm wondering if it's possible at all. To schedule them in for the next meeting and that way we have plenty of time or they have plenty of time to. Adjust their schedules to be able to present.
And Mr. Chair, I I concur with Mr. Hicks. I think it would be. Behave our commission to actually hear what this company has to say before they get a decision about zoning ordinances relative to EV charging stations. I also would be curious if there's a possibility for us to do some sort of outreach to residents. To get their input and feedback on charging state, EV charging stations. Maybe just through like a mailchimp style email survey or something like that. It's a relatively non controversial thing, but I still think it would be good to inform people. More than just having these discussions and these meetings that were considering this topic. And also get feedback from people that are, you know, interested in the in the subject and have an opinion.
I think that's a good idea. I think getting getting that feedback. Also possibly surveying interests, you know, who who. It'd be interesting to know how many residents are, just as a. You know, percentage, how many have electric vehicles or would make use of charging. Just to understand kind of where we are as a microcosm of of maybe society in general. It'd be good information.
There wasn't anything about that on the census, was there?
We don't have that data yet. It's coming out slowly, but and I don't know if they did ask that.
I don't recall, I don't recall any questions about, I mean, it was only the 10 questions to share for the census, so.
And and I had a, I'm trying to remember who I had the conversation with and it was about electric vehicles. And infrastructure on a broader sense in general, if if, for instance. How much capacity is available to your average neighborhood if if homeowners started. You know, pursuing. Installing like a level three. At their homes.
Install level threes at their houses, but.
Yeah.
But that's.
For one, it's not available.
So if everybody had one. I I don't know that it weighs that much, the smaller ones especially.
Right, right.
So the a survey is interesting because we could. Also ask about the solar panels. We could do sort of a combo. And I'd like to make it a little bit educational and also asking the questions because it's we might as well take the opportunity to let people know. The benefits that they might find with those. And the reason which is why the planning commission is looking at it, planning commission is looking at this because we think it's a good thing. For the community, but we'd like to run some things by you, get your.
Yeah, I think.
So did you just sign up to create a a survey for me?
I did. I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the bill will be in the mail?
Yeah.
Not in our base contract.
Thank you, Jill and Eric.
Say thank thank you, Eric. Oh, no, he is here, so he's not like suddenly been tasked with something that's been thrown on his desk. Well, maybe it has, but he's here to hear it.
He's in.
Okay. Any any further discussion, questions, any anything anyone want to speak to regarding charging stations?
Yeah, just I think that was a really good question, you know, as far as infrastructure aligning with capacity. So it'd be it would be very interesting to know how many residents actually own electric vehicles. And that would answer a a lot of questions, I would believe, but yeah, I'm interested in the combo. You know, they're kind of in the same vein with with charging stations and solar energy kind of like. So yeah, I'd be interested in then and and Jill, if you need some help with survey questions or otherwise, I'm open to doing that.
You're gonna help me with the survey? Is that what I heard? Reducing the total hours.
She's thinking she's thinking question. He's thinking questions. I know that he's got like he's got some ideas in mind for things to ask. Is that right, Terrence?
That would be an accurate assessment.
Come on over and we'll see how we can incorporate them all together.
All right. Well, if there are no further discussion on EV charging stations this evening, we'll move on to other matters for discussion. And that kind of opens it up. Any discussion be appropriate or does it anyone? Do we want to bring up the topic of what Mr. Roberts brought us this evening or?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in on that. I was now I saw the earlier day, the PowerPoint or. The comments and there was some photos of the property. And I thought I'm not that well versed, but is there a distance? Between residents and faith based organizations and things of that nature? When opening a cannabis operation here in the city?
There is a thousand foot buffer between schools, childcare facilities, parks, you know. Municipal facilities, but that's. And then that applies for all recreational cannabis. We have a similar. So in the 500 foot for the for shelters. So this, I mean, if we were to. Allow, you know. Add the office district to it, they would still have to fall. You know, follow those same distance parameters.
Right, so that's that's a good question. Actually, Jason and I were talking about this last night. Because when we were when we were talking about the ordinance for primary caregivers. You know, we were talking about the fact that that there's the the school across the other side of 12 miles. So would that parcel even be within? The green zone, do we know?
Well, you know, if you look at the photo of the building, there's a home in the photo. And so that's the only question that I had about the buffer. Between the homes and any cannabis business, as I said, and when I looked at the photo. At the end of Lathrop in 12 mile, there was a a building. The building that is in question was right next to a residential property. And so that was.
The residential property is the one that Mr. Roberts is talking about. That's his property.
Oh, I see.
And it's it's in a zoning district that's currently is on office.
It's a non it's a legal non conforming home.
Right.
Till you had your hand up there.
Yeah, I was just gonna go back to to what Suzie was just saying about the property being zoned office. And so just for Mr. Roberts benefit and for anybody else who was interested in that. From the time that we started talking about retailers in particular. We talked about having those be in the place where other retailers are permitted, which they are not permitted in the office district. So that's why the office district was never considered. As an area for any of the cannabis facilities.
And just kind of to add to that, that's that's why the office district was chosen for the. Primary caregiver facilities, because those are those are areas that generally don't support or see a lot of vehicular traffic, so. You know, I think the city is going to and and no disrespect to Mr. Roberts or his property or the office that he got. But I I think the, you know, the city may receive several requests for their parcels to be rezoned at the request of a cannabis industry or cannabis business. I think it's not the wisest choice to be looking and and I understand Mr. Roberts property is unique that it's a it's a residential home in an office district, but. Looking at at spot zoning individual parcels or vending the ordinance to conform with individual parcels is is generally not a. Not a good practice, especially when the amount of time and and work that was put into this. This ordinance is process. You know, it it's certainly not a simple oversight that the office district was omitted, that that was. Something that was calculated, evaluated and the determination was made to leave that out, so. Just, you know, I'm sure many of you are already aware of that, but for the benefit of the new members, just kind of putting that out there.
And I think that, you know, Mr. Roberts did bring up in his comments. The point of, you know, the the marijuana study group did identify. Traffic patterns and parking and things like that as concerns. I think those things are still concerns even for the districts that we do allow in the zoning ordinance for there to be. These retail medical facilities. And just looking at the the map from the packet from our April meeting where we actually covered the ordinance and it shows like. The, you know, the different areas where that buffer zones need to be in place because of the separation distance restrictions in the ordinance. The the area where Mr. Roberts property is and the adjoining properties, there's there's looks like there's three properties in that part of the office district just east of. Lathrop Boulevard, so. It it, you know, we're not I I I agree that it doesn't make sense to change the the ordinance to allow for. These facilities in the office districts in general, but that's a relatively small. You know, and kind of segregated set of the office district just east of Lathrop Boulevard. I wouldn't necessarily disregard it out of hand just because we purposely left the office district as a whole. Out of the approved section of the ordinance for marijuana facilities. Not saying that we should do it. I'm just saying I wouldn't dismiss it out of hand just based on that alone.
Yeah, I guess that was that was why I was asking my question is is, you know, if if there was a school, I mean. I agree with Jason, but if there if there was a school that's that's across the street and he's not in in that area isn't in the green zone anyways, then that's something, you know, we couldn't get around anyway, because. I guess it's a question for Scott, but Mert Mertma requires is is where the requirement for 1,000 feet comes in, correct? Not not that that wasn't our we there wasn't like a 500 feet and we upgraded it to 1,000. It was it was in Mertma, right?
Yeah, and I think we adopted the standard that was was set out there, you know, and and just kind of to go to that point, Jason, I mean, there's there. You know, there's parcels in the Village Center that probably would be fantastic for a cannabis facility. But again, you know, taking taking what the work that has been put into it and done it, I I don't think it's just an oversight that that. You know, his particular parcel wasn't considered or or was excluded. So, you know. I'm just, you know, cautionary words about changing ordinances at at the request of individual property owners is generally not a good idea.
So I I hear you saying Scott, but and kind of to reiterate what Bruce just said. If there's some sort of another. Business, another like a school, right, that has. Is close enough to that property. And would violate the separation distance part of the ordinance, then this is a moot point.
Right, that's what I was getting.
The the map that I'm looking at from our April meeting. Shows a bunch of buffer zones, but not one over there, but and I don't know if that's just because we didn't look at that specifically because the. Because there are other parts of the office district that are excluded because they are within the separation distance requirements. So I guess the request that I would suggest we provide ask Giffords Webster to look into if that specific property. Is in would be in violation of the separation distance language.
Well, as I understood that the school that was mentioned as being there on 12 mile was is not open anymore. So that's why I didn't show up on the map. We did look to. Even though. We still felt it was appropriate to identify the locations of schools in nearby communities.
There there's a an academy called Crescent Academy that has cars lined.
Says it's closed.
According to Google?
Yeah.
So I would check with the facility itself because there are long lines of cars.
Wonder if that's associated with COVID or information related to. It possibly having been not shut down, but they closed down maybe and I'm speculating, so I don't know that.
I don't know either. Yeah, it just looks like there's a lot of traffic and there are times when you would expect people to be picking up kids from school. Monday through Friday around 3 o'clock. Like lines of cars snaking on to 12 mile road. It just looks like a pretty busy school, but it could be for some other. Temporary purpose like a COVID testing site or something like that's possible.
So we can certainly do that and update you on that.
Yeah, considering it's a property that's not really within our jurisdiction, but it does correspond to. Yeah, it does correspond to this this. Buffer zone or potentially corresponds to this buffer zone. Okay, well, I thought it was, I guess, important to at least get some discussion on the table here. Since Mr. Roberts is still with us and and so he he gets a sense of the tone of where this is at. Not sure that the discussion is totally final. We'll do some more due diligence and get some information here. And. I guess follow up with. I was gonna say, Suzie, is there information through the city that I mean, was this going to be handled administratively? Aside from the fact that the presentation has been brought to us or is there?
Why? There's nothing here that can be handled administratively. I mean, it would be to to allow to get Mr. Roberts property into. You know, to be viable for a cannabis facility, the properties would either have to be rezoned or you would have to do, there would have to be a tax amendment. To the ordinance to. So there's.
But but I mean, in terms of information of what is known or what Jill would bring to the table, then then it would be a series of these are the steps that would have to be taken. This would have to be approved. It would come before the planning commission for.
Yeah, regardless of whatever we tell you about the school, the process is the same. Either Mr. Roberts has to apply for a rezoning.
Yes.
The CB district or the city has to change the the all the. The amendments that we just made to allow. All those uses in the office districts.
Jill, just so you know, the Crescent Academy's school year started September 7th. At that site for grades K through eight. So they are for grades K through eight.
Okay.
Their their school year started September 7th.
Excellent. Well, when we did our maps, which was about a year ago, they may have been closed.
Yep, no, it's an announcement on their website.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you, which is also why we wanted to make sure that when applicants made their applications for that, that we made it very clear that we were not mapping those facilities, that that was up to the applicants to map the facilities. I just wanted to say that out loud.
Okay, so they.
That may not be an issue then. That may not matter for Mr. Roberts and his property if he's right across the street from a school.
So so he would, yeah, essentially he came to the city without that understanding or that clarity. The due diligence of of saying, hey, does this does this meet the criteria where it could even be allowed or accepted? Would, when I said administratively, I was looking at. Certain information being self evident or evident from and and it being able to be advised that this is just not something that's possible. Unless these things, you know, and the 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 presence of a school there. It it it's if he's within the buffer zone makes it a non viable approach regardless of changing the zone.
I I guess, I mean, I I Mr. Roberts and I have had several conversations over. The last couple of weeks about. What what options are available to him, what information, you know, should be considered? So. I think that answers your question. I I we're in regular communication. I mean, there's. Everyone has like all of the cannabis information is also online and available to anyone that's interested in learning more about how, when and where. Cannabis may be allowed in the city, so I. I think that probably covers it, right?
I think so. All right, move on to if there's any other matters for discussion. From if not, we'll go on to general communications.
I just have a couple of things that I want to bring up for. The the DDA is hosting. We have a couple. We have some events coming up. The biggie is our the return of the winter market shop small. Saturday, November 27th from 10 to 2. Corey and I have been working hard to get a full slate of vendors. To come and sell us their fabulous creations. So we've got about two dozen vendors. Ready to go. We will also be having. Some outdoor activities, smores, you know, smores fires, hot chocolate. So I encourage you all to come out and shop and visit and. Bring a friend or 50 and that would be awesome. I will be sending you all out and an email with some volunteer opportunities. If you're interested, we do need some help. Manning the small station and and the fire, so. You'll get a you'll get an email from me tomorrow. We are also, we're also hosting the Christmas tree lighting on December 7th. And we're working to. And the time is escaping me right now. I want to say it's 7 o'clock, but I can get back to you with those dates or with that time. We're trying to get that trolley back to tour the Christmas light tour like we had a couple of years ago. And then we will also be doing breakfast with Santa on December 18th, so. Please join us for all of those events, especially the shop small that kicks off our holiday season and. That's that's what I have for you today.
Hey, any other general communications?
The police department is hosting their second annual Thanksgiving dinner. This is Friday. I think at 6 o'clock when we double check.
And if you haven't gotten your tickets. I'm so sorry. You'll have to come next year.
In the pole?
Oh.
Yes, it is. It is full or well, I don't know. You know, I don't know if we've reached the maximum amount of attendees, but we did reach the max. We we met our our cutoff because we need to get supplies, right? But we did reach the max. We met our our cutoff because we need to get supplies, right? So.
Right.
But it should be a really great time.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Great. Okay, if there's no other communications to share, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll just say one one thing real quick, Mark, because I am working on a really slow computer right now, but I just I did a Google distance and it it just for the prior discussion, and it's only 370 feet from Crescent. So that would seem to be eliminated even even if it was rezoned.
Okay, yep, and that's that's what I was suspecting without the benefit of a plan or layout brought before us, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Hey. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody. Good night.